Ladies and gentlemen, and folks out there in the viewing public, welcome to the Maheapac, Maheapac, excuse me, Central School District Board of Education meeting of May 18th, 2023. Can I get a motion to open, please? Second, please? All in favor? Let's stand for the pledge.
...
Thank you. Okay. We're gonna do a little bit of election housekeeping. The election was on Tuesday, and the way it works is the oath, there's gonna be an oath of office for trustee McCracken. He is going to serve in the remaining term commencing on May 16th, 2023, and expiring June 30th of 2020, 2023, the end of the school year due to the vacancy and expiration of the seat of Michael Simone. So he's gonna take the oath at the podium. A little, let's give him a round of applause as he goes to the podium. And Melody, why don't you take over?
So you can repeat after me?
Okay. Raise my right hand, too. Okay.
I, Tanner McCracken.
I, Tanner McCracken.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of trustee of the Maheapac Central School District Board of Education.
Of trustee of the Maheapac Central School District Board of Education.
Through June 30th, 2023.
Through June 30th, 2023. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
And he's gonna get to do that in a couple more weeks. We have our opening meeting. Okay, with that, we're gonna turn it over to our esteemed superintendent, Christine Tona, and she has some, some news for us.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you. Very exciting news, and we have so many people in our audience this evening because we do have a packed agenda, so it's perfect timing. I'd like to invite up to the podium four of our students here at Maheapac High School that served on the mascot selection committee. We have senior Ava Van Nordwick, junior Sophia Buteroni, sophomore Daniel Walsh, Walsh, and freshman Lexi Buteroni. Come on up to the podium.
So as we know, selecting a new mascot for Maheapac is definitely a difficult topic, but for our mascot committee, we all had the objective of selecting a new mascot that embodies the spirit of Maheapac and would provide the school and the district with the recognition it deserves and invoke pride and enthusiasm within all parts of our Maheapac community.
The mascot committee consisted of various community members as well as high schoolers and, as well as administrators. Over the course of the first meeting, the mascot committee was divided into different subgroups who were tasked with developing different characteristics that embody the name and spirit associated with the Maheapac community. They, they were given certain prompts such as three words to describe Maheapac, what draws people to our district, as well as others, and were sent home with the homework to think of a mascot that embodies such characteristics. Some of the characteristics that our committee came up with were that, were that we are caring, that we are kind, competitive, intelligent, persistent, among many, many others.
During our second meeting, the committees reviewed traits and characteristics that were introduced during the first meeting. Then we went back into our groups and discussed some mascot ideas. Finally, we went, came up with 30 ideas, went back, discussed more. Then finally, each group said their top three choices, and then we narrowed the list down to 12.
In our third meet, in our third meeting, we were in our groups again, and we were going over the 12 top choices for our new mascot, and then we voted as the committee what the most popular choices would be as the top three. The most popular choices were Mavericks, Mustangs, and Wolfpack.
After discussing rationale for all three of those choices, this past Tuesday, all students K through 12 got to engage in a Google form that showed the top choices for mascots, and they got to put in their input and what they believe would be the best new mascot for Maheapac. And I've yet to see the next slide, so it's a big reveal. But the student input that was provided led us with the Maheapac Wolfpack.
So before I finish the last couple of slides, these four students were absolutely terrific to work with, as well as the entire committee. I'm grateful for everyone in the community, our staff members, some board members joined us, and students from our middle school and high school. They gave up lots of time, and we had a wonderful conversation. And yesterday, these four students met with me, and this slide was definitely blank. I have to say that this is the biggest secret that I've ever kept. So the next steps, as the mascot committee, the selection committee, we'd like to bring them back in June, and we could start discussing some logo ideas. Administrators in the district, we will work together to finalize a plan and a timeline for the district-wide changes that need to be put into place. We have to have this plan submitted to the State Education Department by June 30th of this year, but all of the changes across the district are not necessary until June 30th of 2025. And then if we need additional time for certain things, we can request an extension from the State Education Department. And then on June 15th, at our next Board of Education meeting, the Board of Education will have the time to, to consider what the students presented this evening, and then ultimately vote to adopt our new mascot, as well as the transition plan on, on June 15th. Go Wolfpack!
All right. Thank you so much. I want to thank the stu-, I was there a couple of meetings, and... Okay. Photo op. Photo op. While they're doing that, I'll just give you... We should move, okay? So I, I will tell you, we did have other community members and parents as well at the, at the, on the committee, and it was, they were very, very engaged and a really good, good talking, and it wasn't, it, it, this is a hard thing to do because we had such a strong tradition of the old, of, of the Indian, but it was done with seriousness and with, with purpose. So I'm really, really happy, and I want to thank the superintendent for putting this committee together, and I want to thank the committee. They did a great job, and I always love when the students speak. It's, it's definitely a highlight of the meeting. All right, with that, we're gonna continue with our active, very chock full agenda, and I'll turn it back to the superintendent for Maheapac CARES.
Thank you, President Dululo. And at this time, I'd like to invite assistant principal from Maheapac Middle School, Allison Follman, up to the podium, and I think there's quite a few students in attendance tonight.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you to the Board of Education for the opportunity to recognize and celebrate our PBIS CARES program and students at the middle school. PBIS is our Positive Behavior Intervention Supports at the Middle School, and our CARES acronym stands for Consistently Safe, Acting Responsibly, Respect for All, Engaged in Learning, and Supporting Others. And the students that we're celebrating tonight are embodying these characteristics every day at the middle school, and they have been recognized by a variety of staff members in all areas of the middle school multiple times throughout the school year. It is my absolute pleasure on behalf of the middle school and the CARES committee this evening, I'm here with science teacher Mrs. Fox, special education teacher Mary Wheeler, to celebrate our students at the middle school. We keep a diligent tally all year long of all the students' CARES cards, and every student who receives a card gets a star up on our CARES wall at the middle school. And then in May, Mrs. Wheeler always reminds me, Mrs. Follman, we need to get ready to celebrate our students at the Board of Education meeting, and that's how we arrive here. So without further ado, I would like to call students up to receive their certificates. Jenna Aljimal. Sophia Andre. Congratulations. Eva Artruce. Congratulations, honey. Lucas Beany. Madeline Bucci. Olivia Bucci. We have CARES in the family. Imit Cofon. Lexi Kleslin. Lido Kop. Congratulations, Lido. Ooh, I'm on. Jasmine Dafino. My off? Brian Devlin. Evangeline Duthis. Aya Ganey. Uf Grimm. Marin Humich. Estrella Vela Martinez. Shay. Shay Massett. Dylan McDermott. Congratulations, Dylan. Brendan McManus. Congratulations. Tori Nystrom. Allison Orthies. Congratulations, Allison. Diego Portillo. Ellie Potter. David Duarte Ramos. Bryce Richardson. Gabriella Zavala Rojas. Nathan Strauss. Gianna Tucci. Vincent Walmer. Congratulations, Vincent. Congratulations to all our Maheapac Middle School students who care. No, it's a good idea. They could even do two rows. Yes, congratulations.
Outstanding. Congratulations, everybody.
Next slide, that was great.
Congratulations.
Good night, congrats, Mrs. Humich.
Take care, Joan. Good to see you, buddy. Okay. Guys, ready? All right, so we seem to be having a nice theme of, of students, so we're gonna continue that. Next, I'm gonna turn it over to the superintendent, who's gonna introduce the Mu Alpha Theta Math Honor Society.
All right, thank you. We're very excited to have Mu Alpha Theta Honor Society representatives with us again to talk about, to provide an update about their club with their advisors, Mr. Melville, Mrs. Posh, and Mr., Mr. Turnchrock. So I'll turn it over to the students.
Hi, thank you so much for having us. We really appreciate the opportunity to speak. My name is Brett Bergerson, and I'm president of the Maheapac chapter of Mu Alpha Theta Math Honor Society, and we're here to present an update about our chapter, as we hope to be added under Appendix B. So as we discussed last time we were here, and we were hoping to bring back Math Night, which was pre-pandemic, and a night where the community came together and participated in math activities, and fast forward to 2023, we're really glad to say that this March, we brought Math Night back, and we had a really lovely turnout. It was all over social media, parents said that they really loved it. We had parents from all of the elementary schools come, there were multiple activity tables led by Mu Alpha Theta members with different activity, math-related activities, Connect Four and math board games for younger kids, and basic coding for some of the older kids, and, and we also had like classrooms with math student helpers, and, and we're just really glad that we brought this back, and we hope it continues. So I will now pass the baton to our lovely vice president, Monica Lazar.
I'm vice president, Monica Lazar. So for the STEAM fair, in 2021, we had virtual participation, but in 2023, we were able to bring back full-scale in-person. So we had three activity tables for math games, and this included tessellating shapes, engineering mandelas, and Fibonacci sequences. And for next year, we already have plans with the Science National Honor Society to continue and expand the STEAM fair. Our peer tutoring program has also continued to be a success, and just in semester one, there were over 450 hours of peer tutoring completed by our members, and for semester two, we are planning to at least match this.
Want to get a little closer to the mics?
Oh, sorry.
No, no, it's okay.
So for the future, we're gonna participate in the STEAM fair, we're gonna continue Math Night, bring in more guest speakers, and we will be expanding our peer tutoring program, and we're also going to work on implementing more fundraising activities so that we can provide math scholarships for some of the students at Maheapac. And that's all. Thank you.
Thank you. How about a round of applause?
So thank you to these two student representatives and their advisors. So this is part of the process about getting approval for Mu Alpha Theta as a club, so we'll be discussing that further, and we will be in touch with you. But thank you to Monica, and thank you to Brett, and we'd also like to congratulate, congratulate Brett, she is our valedictorian this year. Congratulations, Brett.
And my neighbor. Okay.
Thank you.
I apologize for that. Next is our capital project update. If you haven't, if you have been paying any attention, there's quite a bit of activity going around the campus here at the district, and Ms. Tona, why don't you take us, introduce the next speaker?
Yes, thank you. So as President Dululo said, we are in the midst of the capital project, and we're very excited about the updates and upgrades that have happened. So I'd like to invite from our architect, architectural firm Tetra Tech, Chris Glaubitz, and from our construction manager firm, the Palumbo Group, Lou Rodriguez.
Those are big words.
So you get, you do use this stuff, right?
All right, thanks. While, while Melody's pulling this up, I'll get started. First, I went to NC State, Wolfpack. We did a, we did a wolf thing, it was a lot of fun, you know, like the thing, so congratulations on your new mascot. We will, I'll try to kind of run through the agenda real quick so we can just kind of get into it when we, when we get the slides pulled up. We'll talk a little bit about a very high-level sort of budget check-in on where we, where we stand with numbers. We'll go through, you know, very quickly, just, but all the phases of work that are happening right now. We'll talk a little bit about schedule. We'll go through a quick summary of what's under construction, what was recently completed, and what's coming up, basically give you an overview of that. Okay, what did I forget? We... Okay. So, high level, we, you'll see that there are two, only two numbers on here that are very specific. The first one is the early package, and that's because the books have been closed on that. That was, included some roofing, and the other specific number is the, is the bond authorization down near the bottom. The other numbers you'll see are rounded because these are dynamic budgets, right? We're, we're in construction, the books aren't closed yet. So what you see at the top in the yellow is, represents the scope of work that was voted on in the referendum. What you see in the orange is essentially bonus work, right? We, we had some good bids, we were made, able to manage the projects well, and ended up with some money left over, and we were able to do some, some work, and you'll see that there's an unencumbered amount at the bottom there that can, that can be used for, for some future work. So you may have seen another version of this within the last month or so that, that indicated there was, there was not as much money unallocated. Why is that? So through the process of construction and, and just, you know, ongoing budget refinement, three things happened. Christina Howe found some money in your food service budget that had to be allocated, and so we looked for a good opportunity to be able to allocate it to some capital project expenditures and be able to reduce some of those amounts. Number two, Mr. Lou Rodriguez, as we were nearing the end of capital project phase one, typically what we'll do is we'll hold a construction contingency for unforeseen conditions, just so that that's in the budget. We're now, you know, very close to the end of that project, so we said, okay, I feel comfortable releasing some of that money that we're holding to cover that phase. And the third thing was, we talked also to your fiscal advisors, who were also allocating some money to cover bond costs. And again, comfort level, now that we're further along in the process, we can release some of that, some of that money that we were holding to just be sure we're covered from a budget standpoint. So those are the three main things that, that are the difference.
Chris, before we leave, and I think what's really important with this, when you look at it, the bond was passed in 2000. I'm sorry. So the bond was passed in 2019. We went through COVID, we went through a lot of obstacles with this project, and to say that today, that we're still in, in a great place, and we're keeping to the schedule, I think is, it's a testament to the team. We had, we've had a great team, administration, everyone really pushing for this project. When you look at... When you look at so many other districts that have went through the same types of hurdles, right? Especially, you know, right when 2000, right after 2019, after the bond was voted and approved, everyone hit some hard times. We all hit hard times. We pushed through, and I think it's really important, and this shows super success, not a minor, it's super success on this project, and the fact that we were able to even not just complete the work that was promised to the community, but give more. And that's what this, it's a, that's what this picture states. It really shows that we, we really gave more to the community, and we still have a discussion to have on what's left, so. Thanks. So on the schedule side, this project was, broke up on purpose. Multiple phases of SED submission, approvals, and bidding. And so you'll see, we had an early package, which was our roofing project, which was, again, a super success. Then we moved into Phase One, which was really the work at this facility. Significant amount of work that was done here. And then next phase of work, we broke it up on purpose because, again, through COVID, what we're finding with long leads with mechanical equipment and whatnot, we looked at Phase Two and said, you know what, let's break that up into two phases. We bid it into two separate projects. And again, both of them successful. Phase Two A, we're still ongoing. We've been, we're ongoing strictly because of the fact that there's material delays that were due to COVID. But overall, financially, we're in a great position. We had libraries across multiple elementary schools. We have the elevator addition at Fulmer. We have, you know, there's a lot of great work in Two A. And Two B, we recently just bid, which is at the middle school, and again, at Lake View. So we're strong position there. That work is going to carry out. And then we have Phase Three, which was some window work here. And actually, looking at the existing, the main sports field, the football field, that's a re-turf that's going to be completed this summer that was added to the scope. And it's, again, all positive things. Smart Bond work. And then there's, we're going out to bid currently with a filtration project that really deals with the water, just making sure the water at all the facilities is the way it should be. And then you'll see that there's also in parallel throughout, there's been EPC work ongoing. You know, you'll see solar panels, you'll see new lighting and whatnot that's been happening. So right now, we're looking at, we're hoping to have all of the work completed by the end of this year. And the only thing that could carry into 2024, that we're projecting carrying into 2024, we're going to be installing chillers at the end of this year. So I say the end of this year, November. That's when the delivery schedule is going to happen for the middle school. Those systems cannot be proven until there's a required load to actually cool the facility. So that's something that's going to actually happen in the spring, summer of 2024. But really, when you look at all the work, our goal is to be completed by the end of this year. And again, everything's been bought out, and the previous slide really shows our position today, in a strong position, and the, you know, the school district looking to potentially look at other work. But that's it. Thanks.
Thanks, Lou. Just talked about all the other slides, that's good. I'm going to run through them real quick. So you probably all saw the middle school turf that got, you know, completed recently. We're doing some final inspections, just final touch-up work on that to finish out Phase One. Phase Two, was there an extra piece you wanted to jump back in on? Phase Two, Louis Ains is under construction. We've got the library that's in pretty good shape, and security vestibule there. So this is a picture of your library. It's a little messier now than it was in this picture because they're starting to, you know, move more stuff in, which is great. The security vestibule has been constructed. That's well underway to allow visitors to come in and be, you know, be checked in in a secure manner. Going over to Fulmer Road, that library's a little bit behind, but still, you know, pretty complete, ready, getting ready for books. The security vestibule for that is going to happen over the summer. At the Falls Building, again, another security vestibule. There's some piping work down in the boiler room that's been completed. So yeah, some pictures of the security vestibule. I want to talk for a moment about the Smart Bond project. So most of this project was funded by the New York State Bond that happened, I don't know, five, six, seven years ago now, that allocated money to districts. So Maye Pack was able to use their funds to pay for the vast majority of the project. This will be, this will be adding cameras and card readers, essentially, so that you're controlling your exterior doors and being able to have eyes in different places. So we're looking forward to that security improvement for the district. As Lou was saying, there's, there are a few, you know, in any construction project, there's those few items that just take longer to complete. This is one of the lists that we kind of maintain and we talk about. Just so everybody knows, when most of the project is done, you think, oh, we're done, we can move on. There's these couple lingering things. The transformer over at Austin Road needs a little bit of final connection and some protection of that. In Phase One, there's a little bit more structural work, and we just had to wait for the summer to do that because that's in corridors and just be sure that the students are out of the building. In Phase Two, there's those security offices we talked about that we're completing, some electrical panels. It's just lead time. It's, just takes a long time to get certain things fabricated these days. And the Fulmer Road elevator get completed over the summer. So the next big piece of work is at Lakeview and the middle school. So Lakeview, this is a similar slide in terms of the scope that we've talked about. You know, over various meetings, the renovations, office spaces, the library, the nursing suite, the OTPT area, as well as the school psychologists, get some new office spaces to support mental health in the building. There was a little bit of work on the playground that was part of the original scope of work. But we're in the process of doing another package, working with Tim Walsh and others to get some playground design finalized, and we can get that into the state for the approvals we need to get and get that equipment ordered and get that going. Over at the middle school, doing some similar renovations. The library media center, the STEM room, renovating that planetarium space to be a large group instruction area, and some kitchen serving area improvements. Phase Three, as Lou said, we call it a recarpet. So this is the replacement of the, of kind of the top layer of the synthetic turf field at your main stadium, as well as a track coating replacement. So that's just aging out over time. Start, you know, start to see some bubbles forming there. And this is, again, one of those projects that we were able to consider because of the good performance on some of the earlier projects. And also, there's some windows in your music suite that will be replaced as part of this project. This PFOA project, so PFOAs are a certain type of chemical that's out there in the environment, and Potomac County tests regularly all your water systems. And so they informed the district that there were some levels that needed filtration. So it's a relatively straightforward charcoal filter that goes in the boiler rooms just to address that water quality issue. So that was a county mandate that the, again, because we had good performance, we were able to just kind of absorb that project and get it done with capital project funds. So, that's it. Any questions?
On the timing of the Lakeview playground, give us an estimate.
So we're working with the playground consultant, who knows the equipment, and we expect to get that final information very soon. It takes us, that shouldn't take us very long to get into the state. The big question is how long the state will take to review it before they sort of authorize. We have to get a building permit for it, basically. So we just have to jump through that hoop. And that, the way we plan to do it, we hope it's going to take weeks, not months like it usually does. So we're trying an expedited project that we can do because it's a relatively small amount of work.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Yeah, yeah. Yes, that equipment is available on state contract date.
The question is, are we going to do the playground, this is the Lakeview playground we're talking about?
Yes.
We're going to purchase that off state contract, right? So that saves a little bit of time, I would think, right?
Yes, that is the plan.
Anybody else have a question? Thank you.
Thank you.
Great, all right, thank you very much. Just want to see, it's great to see the fruition of a $54 million bond that was approved in 2019 finally come in. You're getting to see some of these great facilities being in place. And I know the students and teachers, and even when we go into the Falls to see some of the work that's been done, it's just terrific. So thank you. Okay, so I'm going to move on to the next item is comments on agenda items. Melody, do you have anybody? Okay, all right. So now we're going to go through the finance reports. I'm going to go through them one by one and ask for approval, action. So first is, can I get a motion to approve the treasurer report of March 2023?
So moved.
Can I get a second, please? Anybody have any questions? All in favor? Aye. Motion to approve the warrant for March 2023?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Any questions? All in favor? Aye. Motion to approve revenue status report, March 2023?
So moved.
Second, please. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion to approve the budget transfers, March 2023?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion to approve claim audit report, March 2023?
So moved.
Second, please.
Second.
Any questions? All in favor? Aye. And the last one is extracurricular, sorry, extraclassroom activity, March 2023 report. Motion to approve. Second.
Second.
Any questions? All in favor? Aye. Thank you. Now we move back to Superintendent Tona with the superintendent report.
Thank you again, President Delulo. So first off, I'd like to thank the Mahopac community for our past budget. And I especially would like to thank the Board of Education for their valuable input during the process. I'd also like to thank our entire administrative team, especially our assistant superintendents, Christina Howe, Deborah Legato, and Michael Trombley for their input, guidance, and diligence throughout the process. I'd like to congratulate our incumbent trustees, Ben Delulo and Tanner McCracken, on their reelection. And welcome back to Michael Mongan, who will rejoin the Board of Education on July 1. Our students are the true beneficiaries of this spending plan for the 23-24 school year, and I am very excited about the programs that will be added, as well as those being continued, so that our students receive all of the opportunities and support that they so deserve. So thank you very much to the community. Later on tonight's agenda, we have an important appointment for the board's consideration. Ms. Alyssa Hasbrook comes to us from the Rondow Valley School District, where she's currently their business official. Ms. Hasbrook previously served as the business official in Tuxedo, New York, where she also served in several other business office capacities. Ms. Hasbrook has a master's degree in accounting, and in her college years, she was the captain of her Division One softball team at the University of Massachusetts Lowell. I'm thrilled to have her join our administrative team as Assistant Superintendent for Finance and Operations, beginning on July 1. So please join me in welcoming Alyssa Hasbrook to the Mahopac Central School District. And it's mid, almost late May. It's a very exciting and busy time of the year. I'd like to remind the community that our Relay for Life will take place on Saturday, June 10, from 11:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m., right here on the track at the high school. So hopefully, the entire community can stop by for this wonderful cause. We've got quite a few of our spring teams in contention during playoff season. Boys and girls lacrosse are still in contention. Girls softball, they played today. Before I came into the meeting, they were winning, so I'm hoping that they won at this point. The girls flag football team, they were out on the field before I came in. They also were winning, so hopefully, everyone's still in a positive momentum. We've got some games happening over the weekend and early next week, so best of luck to all of our student athletes. And in addition to athletics, we're in concert season, Honor Society induction ceremonies, all of the end-of-year activities for all of our students, and of course, all of the wonderful celebrations for our graduates. We have so much to look forward to. I'm very excited about the next few weeks, and I congratulate all the students on a very successful school year. Thank you.
Thank you. And again, I echo the thanks to all the work that was done on the budget. It definitely was a team effort, and they did a great job. Okay, with that, I'm going to turn it to the committee reports. We had three meetings, three committees meet. First, we're going to start with the facilities meeting, with Trustee Faro.
No, we didn't meet.
All right, I take that back. All right, so next is the finance meeting. Trustee Schneider, can you give us an overview?
We had met and reviewed our financials, I'm sorry, on May 11, 2023, at the district office. Present was myself, the chairperson, trustee Soffra, trustee Zavino, trustee Delulo, Superintendent Tona, as well as Assistant Superintendent Howe. We have reviewed the district financials, have discussed re-coding and transfers to the aligned expenses in more appropriate categories. Going forward, we discuss some recommendations, the processes inside the business offices going forward. We have discussed some contracts that we have outside of services, the special contracts, as well as the process for purchase orders, being discussed for the means which they're approved going forward. We also discussed that we'll be pre-purchasing our supplies for next year in order to avoid our July 1 increases. And this should improve the distribution of our supplies in a more timely manner for the teachers, the staff, and the students. We will be getting follow-ups on some support questions that had already been received. We have discussed some rates in regards to the preschools that we have that subcontract space from us at the fall school. Store reveal the past three years, we've given rate increases, and it was recommended from the committee that the rate increase, we had the rate of the, not the letting increase, but the tax rate increase of 2.81% increase is the recommendation. The board will have to make a resolution for that to be effective. We have discussed funding in regards to Lakeview capital projects for the playgrounds, some site work, looking at approximately cost of 300-plus thousand on that. We had also talked about Lakeview for the roof, estimated over 1.6, approximately fixed. And we're looking at recommendations from the superintendent in regards to reduce the proceeds from the sale of the district office, and we'll need to do a referendum for that sale to be done, as well as the proceeds of paper we prepared. Capital reserve was presently at that time 2.9. I don't know if that included that favorable variance of the 2.3. That's totally separate, right? Totally, that's going to be future business that will be ending on. So that's going to be future business for next month now that we get to discuss that. We have reviewed the debt service schedule. We had discussed having a follow-up. We have received some more information in regards to having additional items of our liabilities for loans that we have, whether it be on a capital project that you can see, or for the buses that we have, and getting them tied up to our budget presentations. So we have received all the information there. Resolution recommendations, the SED requires favorable variances of fund balances don't lead to allocated reserves. So that means that any additional money that we have left over at the end of the year, the fiscal year, that has to already... um, the fiscal year, that has to already be allocated to different reserves, so it is gonna need to be designated to specific accounts. Superintendent Tona is recommending the tertiary and the capital accounts. Um, committee agrees that those would be the most appropriate, so we will be doing a resolution on that in the near future. Um, we refer the, the internal audit, uh, or risk assessments in regards to, um, the May 2022 reports. SED did not allow us to do an exempt filing, that was accepted, um, after it was submitted by S, to SED, and then SED unsubmitted, that's the State Education Department, so they just did that last week, um, but luckily, um, we had, well, I'm not sure if it was assistant superintendent Howe or superintendent Tona, uh, but it was uploaded, our report, and, um, we're gonna be working on between the responses, we'll need board approval for that as well, to submit that to the state.
And that's on tonight's agenda.
And that's on our consent agenda coming up. Um, we conducted, so, no old business, no new business, we closed at 7:01 PM.
It was a very effective, efficient meeting, I'll tell you that. Uh, thank you very much, trustee, uh, Schneider, that was, that was terrific. All right, next is our, um, HR, uh, committee, with the vice president, Adam Savino, please.
Thank you, President Dululo. The HR committee met on Tuesday, May 9th, at 6:25 for about an hour and a half. As always, most of the, the information is on the, on the HR agenda. Uh, we did discuss, um, the opening for director of technology, um, Lakeview principal, uh, the newly soon-to-be-appointed assistant superintendent for finance and operations. Uh, we went over the resignations, uh, pending, uh, and the beginning stages of contract negotiations for our bargaining units. Um, and that is all I have.
Thank you, President Dululo.
Okay, thank you. All right, so now we're gonna go to a couple of, um, motions here. We're going to actually officially accept, the Board of Education, hereby accepts the following 2023, 24 budget results. Uh, I'm not, guess I have to read them, right? 2023, 2024, school board election and budget vote results. Proposition one, uh, the budget passed. Proposition two, the buzz proposition passed. Uh, school board election, uh, as Ms. Tona said, uh, it's Tanner McCracken, myself, and Mike Mangan, were the, um, uh, the, the winners of the election, the top three, and, uh, I'm gonna just ask for a motion to accept the budget results. Second, please. Any questions? All in favor? Aye. Okay, awesome, thank you. Next is the consent agenda, which includes the appointment of Alyssa Hasbrook, uh, as was noted earlier, so motion to approve the consent agenda? Second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Congratulations, Alyssa. We're gonna wait till July to get you a laptop, but, uh, anyway, thank, yeah, thank you for joining our team. Okay, so now we're going to move to, um, actually, let, let, before I do that, let me, let me, uh, I wanna thank one other person, our, our, uh, so the election starts, uh, voters start to come in, 6:00 AM to 9:00 PM. I said last night that we have a superhuman superhero of a clerk, Melody LaRocca, so she spent, I think I calculated, 18 hours, um, in very comfy chairs, by the way, but I wanna thank her publicly in the, the, the meeting, uh, for all her work. Uh, she needs to catch up on some sleep this weekend, but I just wanna publicly thank her for all the work she did this, uh, week, and for all the work she does for us on the board, so thank you very much. Okay, so now we're gonna go to, um, uh, public commentary, I'm gonna just do my little quick, uh, thing here. As always, you know, we want people to speak, we encourage them to come out, according to the policies, please maintain public decorum appropriate for school, address myself, the board, conduct yourself in a civil manner, obscene language, libelous statements, threats of violence, statements advocating racial, religious, or other forms of prejudice will not be tolerated. Uh, comments as questions should be made in a respectful manner, the, the board will cut off any, uh, comments deemed to be derogatory, uh, or out of order, personal attacks or criticism of any person connected with the district will not be, uh, permitted. So, uh, it's open, Melody, do we have anybody tonight? Hey, one last time, Christine? Okay, yeah, one more meeting, um, for commentary next month. So, with that, I think, ladies and gentlemen, we're done. I, I wanna echo superintendent's, uh, thanks to the community, I, I did, I said it last night. It, it is really important that people come out, and they did come out, uh, to vote and to practice our democracy here in our town, and we, as I've said before, we don't have a lot of control in our lives sometimes, but we do have control of this, and it's important that we support our schools, and whether you voted, whatever you voted, it's important that you participate in, in what, in, in this democracy, in, in this vote, because it's supporting our, our community. So, I wanna thank you, uh, have a great Memorial Day weekend, we'll see you, uh, next month. With that, can I get a, a motion to close the meeting? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you very much, have a great weekend.